Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the November the 1st Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to call Reverend David Frye forward for an invocation. Reverend, thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you for having us. May we gather in prayer. We are gathered here this morning to do the work of governing. The challenge of bringing together this wonderfully diverse community to a place where all can comfortably live and grow. This morning, we offer our thanksgiving to the public servants who will be honored here today. May they know that their service is valued by us all, and that without them, we would not be the strong community that we are. We are blessed by their service. We also offer our prayers for guidance and support for those who have been elected to serve our community as its governors. Keep them mindful of the task of unifying, caring, and nurturing each of our fellow citizens. Be with them in their deliberation. Give them ears to hear clearly, minds to think clearly, and a spirit of service dedicated to the common good. In the days ahead, we ask for your blessing, that your spirit may be upon us, and that we may all serve the common good. We ask this in your name. Amen.
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 May we stand for the pledge?
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
County manager?
Yes, sir. Item one on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, is the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, county manager. You've got a few items this morning I'd like to share with you, if you'll bear with me for a few minutes. First item I have is the respects to COVID. The Moderna, the J&amp;J COVID booster shots are now available. On the 22nd of October, a release from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services states that COVID booster shots will now be available to those in North Carolina who are residents who have been vaccinated with the Moderna and the Johnson &amp; Johnson shots. Booster shots are certainly important tool to provide additional protection against the COVID-19, and this was said by Mandy Cohen, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. And she encourages everyone who's eligible to certainly get that booster. The Moderna COVID-19 booster shot is recommended for individuals who received their second dose at least six months ago, and who are at high risk for severe illness or exposure based on their age, profession, health conditions, which includes people that are 65 years and older, or 18 years older, who live or work in a nursing home, have medical conditions, work at high risk, or live and work in places that many people live together. So please consider getting your booster. You can certainly, more information can be found at the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services website, and you can also call the help center at 888-675-4567. So please consider doing that booster. Second item I have is we're very, very fortunate that we have the guys that we have serving our country in the Coast Guard. They do their job in Hatteras and Oregon Enlist on a regular basis, and just recently, the crew, Coast Guard Station Hatteras Enlist posted a report that they rescued a missing shrimp vessel on the 22nd of October. It was about 10:30 in the morning that they received a call from an overdue shrimping vessel, Miss Sophie, out of Inglehart. And fortunately, they were able to get ahold of the captain and ran aground, and one of the crew members, and they had lost their electronics and their steering, and the small Coast Guard boat went out and searched for them and found them and brought them aboard. So once again, our Coast Guard here in the county has certainly done a wonderful job in saving some lives with a situation that could have certainly turned to the worst. Lost Colony. If you remember last year, due to COVID, their 83rd season, they were not able to have the lost colony. But this past year, the 84th season of the outdoor drama was the most financially successful season that the production has enjoyed in many years. Attendance was up and revenues increased, even though the show had to close the final week of the season because of an outbreak of COVID amongst the cast. The Chair of Roanoke Island Historic Association, Mr. Kevin Bradley, said the reason, he thought there were three reasons that the revenues were up, was first, there was a pinup interest because the show was canceled last year. Second, after more than a year in lockdown, he felt that people were looking to get out and be entertained. And third, the new production received a lot of positive media attention throughout the year. He talked about average attendance was 646 people per night this past season versus 540 average in 2019. And this is the first time that they had seen over 600 people per night since 2013. He also pointed out that ticket revenues were up about 25%. Once again, the increase occurred without increases in ticket prices. So very good season for the lost colony, and we certainly hope that continues in the future. We have our employees, as most of you are aware, very, very important to us here in Dare County that serve our community and work for the county. We've had two recent incidents that I'd like to address this morning, and certainly ask that you continue to keep them in your thoughts and prayers. And one is Sheriff Deputy Brennan Westcott, which Sheriff Doughty pointed out to us recently that Sheriff Brennan, Sheriff Westcott was involved in an accident at the intersection of 64 and 345 here on Roanoke Island. And Sheriff Westcott was driving a sheriff's department vehicle with the lights and sireno, and when the driver of a tractor trailer failed to yield as it was crossing the intersection, and the tractor trailer struck the cruiser. And then the cruiser, of course, then crossed the center line and struck a camper being hauled by a pickup truck. Sheriff Westcott suffered significant injuries, but fortunately, he's been released, and I understand he's doing much better. Is that correct, Sheriff?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. The other employee that I'd like to mention this morning is Jennifer Jankie-Davenport, who is our deputy tax collector. The end of last week, fell down some steps, fractured her skull. She was airlifted to Virginia, and fortunately, I'm hearing reports this morning that she is certainly doing much better. But I would certainly hope that you would keep her in your thoughts and prayers during this difficult time, and thank heavens that she is doing much better. So keep her in your thoughts and prayers. Veterans Day, big day, November 11th. I'd like to share a message with you that will be going out, that I've prepared for those who have served our country. It starts, Veterans Day message from Chairman Woodard. I hope this message finds you doing well, without exception. Everyone in Dare County and the United States and around the world is experiencing additional anxiety and stress due to COVID-19. Together, we will certainly get through this. Despite the strains on our lives, it's important to take the time to step back and reflect on the positives in our families, communities, and the world. Veterans Day in the United States provides one of those great reasons to pause, reflect, and recognize. In 1954, when November the 11th was officially named Veterans Day, United States President Dwight D. Eisenhower called upon all citizens to join to solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly on the seas, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage and freedom. Today, our troops continue to serve with dedication and honor all around the world. We recognize the commitment and sacrifices of our soldiers, sailors, airmen, Marines, coast guardsmen, and merchant marines and their families. Any day is a good day to thank a veteran for his or her service. So please take a moment today to reflect on what this day is truly about, to appreciate and recognize those who served today and did so in the past, to remember their sacrifices, their services with honor, the dedication of those who serve and those who love and support them, and to take the extra time to extend our thanks to those who have and are serving our country. It is because of them and their families that we can enjoy the freedoms that we as Americans often take for granted. Happy Veterans Day, with appreciation and respect. Robert L. Woodard, Chairman, Dare County Board of Commissioners. So please keep our veterans in your thoughts and prayers on November the 11th. And then last but not least, tomorrow, November the 2nd, is Election Day. Please exercise your right to vote. It's very important, and I would encourage you, if you haven't done so early voting, that tomorrow you get out and you exercise your right to vote. With that, Mr. Chairman, County Manager, that completes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to item two on the agenda, and this is the presentation of our county service pins. First on our list this morning, we have Darrell Gray. Darrell's an investigator with the Sheriff's Department, and he'll receive his 10-year pin from Sheriff Doug Doughty.
Welcome this morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I don't know if I'd like to have a little back to you. I kind of get to that.
Watch out.
You know where you are. Thank you for letting us come do this, and I'm gonna do this right off the bat, since you just said that, Chairman Woodard. Thank you for your service, sir. Darrell retired from the United States Coast Guard, and then came to us, and he's been here, the 10-year pin, but he's been with us 10 years. Started out as a deputy, a patrol deputy, and did a great job. Worked over here in the Manio, Wanches area, East Lake, patrolled it for a long time, and figured out after he had had 20 years of service with the Coast Guard, he was getting a little older and wanted to slow up just a little bit, and he went into our Criminal Investigation Division. And Darrell's been there now, what, four?
Coming up on two years.
Two years. But he's done a great job. He's on the back hall, and he's very, very intelligent, does a job that's hard for some people to do. It's not the easiest thing to ask some people some questions that, you know, they really don't like being asked, and he can finish it up and do the task very well. He enjoys what he's doing, and I'll talk about, his wife, I think, works, I know she works with us, she's with the communications, I think she's been on 17 years, I believe, and then, you know, he's followed the footsteps of both his brothers with Al McGrey and Glenn, who both retired from the sheriff's office, oh, with the county. So we're wanting him to stay around a while longer, and hopefully that he will, and we thank him for his service in both directions, and we appreciate it very much. Congratulations.
Now we'll get on the right side.
Next, we have something that we don't normally have. We see very few of these. I'm not sure if we've had any, but we have a 40-year pin this morning. Charles Henderson is here. He's a purchasing technician at the detention center, and he's receiving his 40-year pin from Alan Moran.
Wow. Do we have to make a special pin, Alan, for this?
I don't know. Bobby had a, the diamond's right big, so I think we're doing all right.
Wow.
So 40 years, I don't, like Bobby said, I've asked around, I don't know that we've had one of those before. It's a momentous task, but I, so thinking back on 40 years, I was trying to figure out, you know, put it in perspective. Forty years ago, when Charlie started, Ronald Reagan was president, Dolly Parton's nine-to-five came out. The average home cost was $78,000 in the United States. The Beanbag Chair made its debut, and then here locally, the Secret Spot Surf Shop, Stack 'Em High, and C.C. Hotel all opened up in 1981. And Charlie started with the county. He started in the paint shop at Public Works. Actually, was it the paint shop or putting together trash cans?
Throwing trash cans.
Yeah, actually, doing the trash cans. And then moved from there to finance, and then when the jail opened up in 92, he moved over to be the purchasing agent for the jail, and has been there ever since. When you think about institutional knowledge, that's Charlie. He was there from, well, just a couple of years ago, we had some of the toilet paper dispensers at the jail were acting up, and so I got talking to Charlie, I said, Charlie, you know, let's just buy new ones. He said, well, hang on, we can find the manufacturer. And he dug through his filing cabinet and found the install paperwork for when they installed it in the jail in 1992. And he's got that with every item in the jail. But a testament to Charlie, in the last year and a half, we've all seen the news where prisons and jails have, you know, run out of gloves, run out of cleaning equipment, and had a hard time just getting supplies, like everyone in all different sectors. But we've never had that problem, and that stands to Charlie. You know, his 40, well, 30 years at the jail, those relationships with his wholesalers and the salesmen, that relationship has helped us stay on top of our game, and make sure that we didn't run out of PPE or disinfectants, or even down to, you know, we're a little different at the jail, so even the pens and pencils have to be safe pencils, safe pens, so you can't just go to the store and buy some. And Charlie always makes sure we have everything we need. But not only that, he's the go-to man. If a computer breaks, he's the in-house IT guy. If a phone goes down, or something in the kitchen breaks, everybody calls Charlie first because he's probably seen it or done it before. And for that, he's, that institutional knowledge is, can't be overstated. And I hope he sticks around for a while longer. I know he's probably looking to move on. He's got a wife, Ms. Dorothy, who's ready for him to come home, and son Tommy, who's there with him too. So we hope you stick around for some more, Charlie, with the 40-year pin. Congratulations.
Well. Next, Mr. Chairman, we have our Employee of the Month, and Shanna Fulmer's here to make that presentation.
Good morning, Shanna.
Good morning, everybody. I'm really happy to be here this morning to announce the Employee of the Month. But before I bring the employee up, I just want to say that if I could give a Department of the Month award, I would give it to all of Public Works. They say, "Smooth seas do not make good sailors," and we've had anything but smooth seas this past year, and it really has been a team effort, and I am so proud of what we've done. And I know from the outside, it probably hasn't looked pretty, hasn't probably been the best year from the outside on how we've done things, but I can guarantee, when you're in the trenches and you're looking at it from the inside, I can assure everybody that we have put forth our best efforts and have really risen to the challenge. I'd like to thank our county manager and our finance director for offering their support and encouragement, because without them, I couldn't do what I do in Public Works over this past year. So without further ado, there is one employee in Public Works who has stood head and shoulders above even the best of the other employees, and he always has, and that's been even before this past year. So at this time, I'd like to call Mr. Jeremy Essick up front. Jeremy, if you'll just stand over there so I don't have to wear my mask so I can talk about you. Jeremy's dad, Mr. Billy Essick, retired from the Sheriff's Department. I don't know when he retired, a couple of years ago or so. But in April of 2017, Jeremy's daddy brought this young man into the Public Works Department to see Everett Lee about a job. And as I observed him, he looked like he'd rather be anywhere but at the Public Works Department. So when he and his daddy left the office, I went in and asked Everett Lee, what are you gonna do about this? Everett Lee said, I'm gonna give him a shot. I'm like, God, please, Everett Lee, don't. I said, he doesn't look like he wants to be here. He's not gonna last. You know, it's just a waste of our time to do this. Well, Everett Lee, in true form, didn't listen to anything I said, and we brought Jeremy on. The first week that Jeremy was with us, now, you gotta remember, these guys work early mornings. So the first week Jeremy was with us, Mr. David Overton, who is now his direct supervisor, was in charge of training Jeremy, and Jeremy was late for work one morning, and David said, oh, it's got him, he's done, I'm just gonna go on out. David went into Collinton Harbor to go pick up trash. He'd probably been doing it about an hour or so, and he said he looked up, and he sees somebody walking towards the trash truck. It was Jeremy. He had parked his personal vehicle outside at TJ's, had walked two miles into Collinton Harbor following the sound of the trash truck, because he knew he had to get to work. And it was at that time that I knew he was cut from a different cloth. And I'm like, all right, we might have something here. And since that time, Jeremy has done nothing but excel. He has taken the bull by the horns, taken the initiative. Doug reminded me this morning, when he went for his Class A CDL, you didn't get it the first time?
He was, it got canceled.
It got canceled. Is that when you ran the instructor over?
I didn't.
Okay. So the story goes, the instructor fell over and broke her ankle, and they had to cancel the session because she couldn't continue. So the next time Jeremy went up there, you didn't get out of the truck until you finished the test, right? Jeremy made sure that they were gonna make, give him the CDLs the second time. He has become a crew leader. He has taken the initiative to cross train, which in Public Works has been, we've started that about three years ago. That has literally changed our operations from the point of view, we can continue on. We're not dependent on one person, if they're out, to do a job. Jeremy can run the side loader, he can run the front loader, he can run the, he does Class A, he can run the tractor trailer, he runs the roll-off, did I say that? But Jeremy's been known to come in, 2 o'clock in the morning, run the residential truck, come in, get out of the residential truck, and get in a overhead truck, and get finished that route. How many cans did you pick up that day you came in? You said you had hit a record, 1,600?
1,300.
1,300? 1,300 cans in one day, up and down, up and down, 1,300 times, with a smile on his face. Didn't even look tired. I was exhausted just hearing about it. But, you know, Jeremy is very agreeable, and he's, it's easy to be agreeable when your boss asks you to do something that requires nothing of you or is easy. What we ask of Jeremy is neither easy or fun to do, and he does it all with a smile on his face, and from a supervisor's point of view, it's so refreshing to be able to ask somebody to do something, and they do it willingly and with a smile on their face. I've got one more quick story about you. So a couple of months ago, we had an employee who, early morning hours before daylight, got out of the trash truck to correct a trash can situation, and not one that they had caused, but they were trying to do a good job for this person, fell out of the truck and hit their head on the concrete. I got the call before daylight, but when I got to work that morning, I pulled up that employee's camera in the truck to see if I could glean any further information about what had happened. And I was looking at the video, and I couldn't really understand what I was seeing, because I knew the camera was inside their truck looking at, and I saw another trash truck in front of me. It was Jeremy. Jeremy was on the scene in less than 11 minutes. And we had joked around with Jeremy and said, oh, your response time wasn't very good, maybe, you know, probably had to pick up about 15 cans. Jeremy said, no, I only picked up two more cans. When I got the call, I got two more cans, and then I got on scene. So we laugh now, and we're like, well, we're just gonna call Jeremy if we have any situations, because he's there in a hurry. I mean, it's unbelievable. Jeremy knows everything before it happens. I can be at work and aware of a situation, and I think I'm gonna call Jeremy, who has clocked out and gone home, and tell him something, he already knows it. He's that in tune with the other guys and the employees in the office, and he's, we just think so much of him. You do your family proud, you do the department proud, and you do the county proud. And we just want to say from the bottom of our hearts, thank you very much for doing what you do, being who you are, and I hope you stick around with Public Works because you have a bright future. So thank you, Jeremy. Yes, this is yours.
Before we go to public comment, those of you who received an award this morning, if you'll go right out front here, and we'll get a picture of all of you, please. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time, it's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning, I don't have anyone signed up, but please raise your hand, and I'll recognize you. When I do, please come to the podium. Please limit your comments to five minutes. The green light will come on when your time begins. There's a yellow light on the podium that tells you you have a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. Is there anyone here this morning that'd like to speak at public comment? Seeing no hands here, is there anyone in Buxton that would like to speak at public comment?
No comment from Buxton.
That, Mr. Chairman, we would close the public comment and move on to items five and six, which will be handled by Donna Creef, our planning director.
Good morning, Donna.
Good morning. So I have two items of business this morning. Both of them are zoning text amendments. The first one was submitted by Mr. Richard Fertig, and Mr. Fertig is asking us to amend our definitions of hotel and motel to reflect the current trend of the hotel and motel industry, to use virtual check-ins. Our definitions of motel and hotel were adopted back, I want to say, in 2002. Our definitions of motel and hotel were adopted back, I want to say, in 2002 or so, and at that time, there was no such thing as virtual check-ins, and now we fast forward to 2021, and that's pretty much the trend of the industry. And I was having a conversation with Mr. Fertig about some of his development plans, and we realized that the definitions needed to be updated, and so that he submitted his amendment application. And those definitions that have been revised are in your packet. You'll see that we've included language in there that describes a hotel as a commercial development, and included language for virtual check-in and off-site services. The planning board reviewed this at their meeting last month on October 11th and voted to recommend approval of the amendment and those revisions. The board has to hold a public hearing on those before you can act on those. The first available date is at your next meeting on November the 15th, and that's the recommended action today, is to schedule a hearing on these amendments. Mr. Anloff is here, who is Mr. Fertig's representative, if you have any questions for him, and I'll be glad to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Donna. Anyone have any questions of applicant or Donna? All right, with that being said, can I have a motion to schedule a public hearing on November 15?
Yeah, I move to a hearing to close zoning amendments, definition hotels and motels scheduled at 5:00 p.m. on November 15th.
Thank you, Commissioner Tobin. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House and Vice Chairman Overman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
The next amendment is a request from OT Enterprises, and this is a request to amend both the R3 zoning district and the C2 zoning district. The C2 zoning district allows certain uses that are, they allow multifamily structures, but it's at the dimensional standards of the R3 zoning district. And OT Enterprises owns Hatteras Island Plaza and Avon, and they have some redevelopment plans in which they plan to tear down the old theater building there, which has been vacant for some time, and replace that with multifamily structures. Hatteras Island Plaza was constructed back in 1988, before there was a use-specific zoning map for Avon, which was adopted in 1992. So at the time it was constructed, it did so without any zoning regulations in play that established the parking and the lot coverage for that. So fast forward to today, and they have these plans where they want to tear down the old theater and replace it with multifamily, but they are asking that we allow them to do so with a density bonus of 10 units per acre. The R3 currently allows a dwelling density of 10 units per acre, and they would like to have 20 units per acre. And they are also asking for an adjustment in the lot coverage that would allow them to have a different standard than what the C2 normally allows. We amended the zoning ordinance in 2014 for similar redevelopment plans at Hatteras Island Plaza. At that time, they subdivided the property so that the theater is actually on a separate parcel, even though it's connected to the same complex. In reviewing these proposed amendments, the language that is in front of you would apply only to that section of the C2 zoning district that affects existing group developments that were in existence in 1992, which is basically Hatteras Island Plaza. So what the proposed amendments are doing are they're very narrow in their scope to where they would only apply to existing group developments. So that density bonus that they're asking for would, in effect, only apply to those situations in C2 that have existing group developments that existed in 1992. They are also asking for an adjustment in the lot coverage. Currently, the C2 allows 60% lot coverage. Their plans would result in having a lot coverage of 63%, so they are asking that the language reflect that any redevelopment plans have a decrease in lot coverage of 7%. So that draft language is in your packet in its context. That's a summary of what they're asking for. Well, Mr. Owens is here. He is one of the partners in OT Enterprises, if you have any questions for him, or if you have any questions for myself. The planning board did review this at their meeting in October. The amendments are consistent with the Dare County Land Use Plan. The requested action today is to schedule a public hearing on it before you guys can act on it. We have to have that public hearing, and the next date is the 11, the 11/15 at 5:00. And so I'll stop right there. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Donna. Any questions of Donna or Mr. Owens? All right, is there a motion to approve, to schedule a public hearing on November 15?
So moved.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to do so. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, item seven on the agenda. Lee Nettles is here to present to you the Dare County Tourism Board's request for consent expenditure from the restricted fund line, item 4999, a tourism impact grant.
Good morning, Lee, and welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. It's my pleasure to come before you today to request your consent on our annual tourism impact grants, the TIGs, we call them. This is our main restricted fund grant with awards made once annually. It's, as is the case for all the restricted fund dollars, it's for programs or services needed due to the impact of tourism. The grants are paid on a reimbursement basis, and over the years, these grants have invested more than $10 million back into the community, so we're real proud of that. This year, we received seven applications, and with projects in Rodanthee, Nag's Head, Kildova Hills, and Southern Shores. The Tourism Board reviewed all these and determined that the projects had merit and qualified for the grants. The requested amounts exceeded the available budget by about 15%, so the awards were issued in, at approximately 85% of what was requested. The exception was that the town of Nag's Head had two projects, and they had a higher priority on the Epstein bathhouse and beach improvements, so the Tourism Board allowed them to receive 100% of the funding for that project. And as a result, the Bonnet and Barnes sidewalk extensions received about 43%. So collectively, those were 85% of the funding that had been requested, as was the case with the other grant request. The Dare County Tourism Board voted unanimously in support of the awards, and now I respectfully ask for your consent on these expenditures totaling $525,948. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Lee. Does the board have any questions of Mr. Nettles?
I just had, hi, Lee, good morning.
Good morning.
I just had one, so I could understand the schedule that was included. The project amount, and most notably, let's talk about Epstein to illustrate, the project amount is 569,000. We requested a 250 and recommended a 250. Does that mean over 50% of the project is left unaddressed, and it will be a half-complete project?
No, the tourism impact grants have a tiered match system, so awards that are, or projects that are over 150,000, the requirement is that the applicant brings at least 50% match to the project. So the town of Nag's Head will be funding that difference above the 250,000.
So the project amounts total about 1.2 million, if you go from top to bottom, and your requested amount is the 525, or recommended, excuse me, 525.
The total project is 569...
Oh, I was looking at all of them at 1.2 million, if you add everything up.
The, well, the tiered match varies, though, so for projects under 50,000, there is no match requirement. And then 52, 150, I believe, there's a 25% match, and projects above 150 require 50% match.
So my question is, all of these projects will be completed. The cost will be 1.2 million. The Tourism Board is responsible for 525.
That's correct.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all I was trying to get to.
Anyone else have any questions of Mr. Nettles? All right, then, with that being said, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, there's a motion on the floor to approve by Commissioner Bateman, seconded by the Vice Chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Lee?
Thank you for your support.
This is very significant in Dare with the monies from the tourism impact grants. As you stated earlier, you said over 10 million, and that number's been out there for a couple of years, so I would have to assume that we're probably pushing maybe 12 to 14 million or somewhere in that neighborhood. But this is incredible. This is huge for our towns. It's huge for our community, and I commend the visitors for what y'all do with respects to the impact grants.
Thank you very much. We like to believe that tourism is something that happens with the community instead of to the community, so we're real proud of those accomplishments and appreciate your support.
Absolutely. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Chairman, that brings us to item eight on the agenda. This is a HVAC replacement at the Professional Arts Building, and Dave Clausen will make that presentation.
Good morning, David.
Good morning. As you know, we adopt the capital plan, and part of that capital plan is facility maintenance projects out when they're going to need to replace chillers and boilers, et cetera, for each building we have. And for the Professional Arts Building, they projected 2024 to replace the chiller, I believe, two boilers and three pumps. In August, that department had called me and said, "We're having to put water hoses on the chiller to keep it running, and it's not going to make it through another summer." So what we did is, we approached Barn Hill, which, as you know, is building the new COA buildings, and said, "Would you be willing to look at a replacement of the professional arts system while you're doing the construction?" And they said yes. And that has been admirable for them, because when we started this, they said there was a 21-week lead time on the chiller. Now that it's 23 weeks, and that's going to be after their substantial completion, but they said, "We'll stick around, we'll come back and make sure it gets all done." We asked them to price it as a replacement using the same equipment make that they're putting into the new building. Then we also, the control system in the existing building, we were going to try to work that into the construction and see if we had enough savings, but we're not close enough to being finished yet to know that we can do that, and we don't want to wait another two or three months because of the lead time on the chiller. So we're going to ask you also to include the pricing of the replacement of the control system to the same kind that's going into the new COA building. We had 311,000 in 2024 in the capital plan. The Barn Hill pricing for the chiller, boilers, and pumps was 204,000, which is 107,000 less than our 24 cost. The Barn Hill pricing for the control system is 133,768. Altogether, both of them are $26,716 more than what we had in the 2024 plan for the replacement. We also, I went back and updated where the capital model stands, and I put in the coverages and the ending fund balances. And the real story is that when we adopted the capital plan, we projected a 5% increase in the land transfer tax over 2020, just to be safe. After July, August, and September, that's going to be around a 31% increase instead of the 5. So money-wise in the plan, there's no issue with moving those costs from 24 to 22. Oh, and I wanted to add, facilities maintenance staff reviewed the specs. I put in like six or seven pages into your agenda packet. It was almost 100 pages, and they've signed off on all the specs of the new equipment and system. So what we're asking you to do is to approve the replacement of HVAC equipment and the control system in 22 by change order with Barn Hill. So we're asking you to approve the proposed change orders 27 for the control system and 28 for the equipment, adopt the budget amendment for the capital investment fund, and the amendment to the COA capital project. And I want to add, authorize the county manager to execute the actual change order when it comes from Barn Hill.
So moved. Any questions? There's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner House. Any questions? Commissioner Ross?
Yeah, if I could just summarize, Dave. I think I heard four key points. The replacement was planned two years out, but it can now be accomplished at a savings of over $100,000.
Yes.
Number two, we'll use the $100,000 to fund a control system replacement, which was not in the budget.
Right.
Number three, we have Barn Hill on site, a very, very high-quality contractor who can do the work. And number four, the impact of shifting the funds doesn't alter in a negative way the CIF plan model.
That's right.
Okay.
And it'll standardize all the equipment across the buildings, which is something COA wanted.
Yep, sorry.
That's a win-win-win-win.
It's definitely a win-win-win. Any further discussion? Then those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approves unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is our consent agenda. Go ahead. On the consent agenda, we have the approval of amendments, and we have a resolution to convey personal property to the Outer Banks SPCA.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Next are your board appointments. One is the Dare County Joint Community Advisory Committee. Mary Jerniken has notified the committee of a conflict and has resigned, and Mary Pendle has resigned due to the increased training requirements of the volunteers, and the committee requests their removal from service.
Pleasure, the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Jim, care to weigh in about what kind of impact?
Yeah, there was a, like, we spoke in the last meeting, everybody on the committee has resigned, et cetera.
Yeah, give us some more background, Jim. This is...
What, the Ombudsman, well, federal government placed more training requirements on the state, because they said our state didn't have enough. So the Ombudsman's came up with a new training schedule, and also more responsibility for all of the volunteers. And I think what Mary Pendle wrote here, the one takeaway, is you get all this more training, but we're really now are going to be performing the job of the Ombudsman. We'll be able to do more investigation and things like that, where if we found a situation where we thought maybe, you know, one of the workers was stealing from one of the patients or a family member or whatever, in the past, we would just make a referral to the Ombudsman. Now we can actually take charge and go and do some investigation on it. One of the problems with that is none of the volunteers have any liability coverage in any of it.
Yeah, tell me what that means, Jim, or tell us what that means for your exposure or volunteers' exposure.
Well, if, basically, you're going in and you're making a judgment
Yes.
On if something was done wrong.
Sure.
Could be abuse, could be all kinds of things.
Right.
So you're, at that point, going down and almost doing a thing like law enforcement, which the Ombudsman does, and it's a big step for a volunteer.
Sure.
So who, say you do this, and then, you know, you accuse somebody of doing that, and then it turned out being innocent, and then they sue you for, you know, what you've done. Who covers that? I mean, I'm with the county, so I would assume, for me, the county, it's a county appointment. I would assume I would be covered by the county, but just a regular old person that volunteers for this program...
Nobody would do it.
Nobody would do it. So far, the state has not stepped up and said they would do it, so they're losing everybody.
This is nuts.
They're literally losing everybody.
This is crazy. Where's this coming from?
The Ombudsman themselves are covered through the state.
Yeah, Brandy is.
Yes, oh, yes, absolutely.
And what was the reason, what was the reason for changing this?
The federal government.
Fed?
Now, and I don't know that the federal government said that they were expanding our responsibilities, but they are. So I don't know, there's a lot of questions to be asked.
And they still won't let you in.
And the other thing is, they haven't let you in. And the other thing is, they haven't let us do our job.
Maybe the other thing.
Yeah, I mean, the main thing is, since COVID, they've not allowed, I've had both of my vaccines and a booster. I'm willing to put on a mask and go in there and do my job. They won't let me. I mean, it's ridiculous.
Who won't let you?
The state.
The state will allow them in the facility.
We've not been in a facility since a year ago last March.
I go into Spring Arbor all the time.
Yeah, but his, his group can't go in.
I can go in there, I just can't do my job.
He can't do his job.
Okay. This is starting to sound like some kind of through-the-looking-glass Alice in Wonderland thing. What, this is crazy. What is this going on? This is madness.
I don't know.
If we're going to blame this on COVID, then there should be a plan. Somebody should be addressing this. We just can't let this continue to fester.
This is madness.
Yeah. It's statewide. It's not just Dare County.
Is this part of North Carolina Health and Human Services? Is it under their auspices?
I believe so.
Mandy Cohen's organization?
Yep.
Good God.
Jim, do you think it would help if we drew up some kind of resolution requesting the state, your group, be allowed to go into facilities and do your job?
I think that, and I think maybe some pressure from some of our elected officials.
Yeah.
I mean, we're elected officials, but I mean, state elected officials.
Right.
You know.
I agree too.
You know, I mean, what the heck?
Well, we have a burgeoning senior population here. This is not going to go away. This is going to be magnified here. This is a public service thing we need to do for the constituency here.
Jimmy said this is going on, the same thing that's happening here is happening statewide.
Yes. I don't know what the regulation level is of CAC members, but Dare County, I was kind of shocked that everybody resigned, but...
Has Susie Walters resigned as well?
Susie told me on the phone that she was going to resign. She was on vacation when she told me, but she's not filled out the, they sent us all this letter that we had to read and check off that we had read it and sign it and send it back, and was either yes, I accept it, or no, I don't. And that's this letter here that Mary had written. And I know Susie said she hadn't sent it back and wasn't sure she was going to, so...
And Jim, none of the other folks throughout the, organization throughout the state are allowed into the facilities to...
No, nowhere. There's been zero oversight.
Wow.
By the CAC statewide for, what, 18 months?
I cannot stand.
Yeah, that seems like that needs to be in the legislators' hands at this point.
And it's, I mean, it's in times like this that it's ripe for people to take advantage of them.
Yes, thank you.
You know, but...
So will you work with the staff, and let's draw up a resolution we can bring back to the board?
I would also urge contact with Senator Steinberg, Representative Panik, and Representative Goodman.
Yep.
All three.
Yeah, resolution followed up by a letter to get the powers.
This cannot stand, guys. This is just not right. I'm amazed, I did not know this was going on, Jim. And again, with a father-in-law at Spring Arbor at 95, he has very little ability for his own defense, or this sort of protection is essential, so I support that.
So with the matter at hand, with the request of Mary Pendle and Mary Jernigan, since they don't feel comfortable serving on the board with the new requirements, I would move to approve their, their resolve from the committee.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to accept Mary Pendle and Mary Jennings resignation from the Dare County Joint Community Advisory Committee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion?
With regret, I do.
Yeah, with...
Right. All right, those in favor of the motion, then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thanks for your support on this, guys.
Thank you.
Next are your upcoming board appointments. In December, you have the Equalization and Review Board with five terms expiring, the Special Motor Vehicle Evaluation Review Committee with three terms expiring, and the Tourism Board with four terms expiring. In January, there are no expiring terms on any of our boards. And on February, you have two terms expiring on the Planning Board. And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, county manager. That brings us to item 11, which is Commissioner Business and Managers Business. And Commissioner Ross, do you mind kicking it off?
Thank you, sir. I'd be glad to. Just have a couple of items. In following up your comments to open the meeting with regard to our respect and appreciation for veterans, with Veterans Day coming, the Dare County Center is hosting a Veterans Day Celebration Lunch on November the 10th at noon. And I plan to attend, and I'm sure it's a very worthwhile celebration for these deserving Americans. Number two, on the Albumoral Commission where I sit, the good news there is we continue to see grants from the federal government, especially the American Rescue Plan, and our budget from two years ago at around $6 million has now risen to just over $8 million. So the funding for meeting the needs of job seekers, seniors needing congregate meals and/or meals on wheels, and additional support to the community has been well-funded, and we're really pleased about that on the Albumoral Commission. And lastly, on November the 7th, the Gentle Expert Memory Care Gem Folks, in addressing and recognizing needs of memory impaired and/or dementia-related patients in our community, will hold a candlelight ceremony at 2:00 PM at St. Andrews by the Sea Church. I will be attending and speaking with the group there. And that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got just a few little things. Like you stated earlier, tomorrow's Election Day. Please get out, exercise your vote. I know the municipalities definitely need to hear support from their constituents, so please get out and vote. Our day in history in 1512, Michelangelo's Fresco with Sistine Chapel was open to the public. And in 1952, the first thermonuclear bomb test was held on the Marshall Islands through the US Navy. And coming up on November 11th, to all of our veterans here in Dare County, all of our veterans aboard the United, across the United States, and also in overseas, thank you for your service, and thank you for keeping us safe and free. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Tuesday, October 26, County Manager and I attended a DOT Alligator River Bridge update in Eden. During that time, DOT stated that they have expedited the environmental study and that it is now signed, along with the merger process, which includes all of the relevant state agencies. The merger was signed off in September of 2021. The new bridge is going to be a 100-year design with a current estimated cost of $212,265,400, and that will be for a two-lane structure. Ultimately, if and when Highway 64 is four-laned from Columbia to Man's Harbor, another two-lane bridge would be added at that time, so we'd have a situation then similar to the Wright Brothers Bridge going over to Currituck. Money, of course, will be the main issue with regard to this. DOT is waiting for the federal transportation bill to pass, which will make available a pot of money for the funds to be pulled from, including a federal grant for $100 million against this total project. They need to get the right-of-way plans done in August of 2022 to be able to proceed on time, as they say. If they don't get it done by then, the timeframe extends significantly. And DOT has not guaranteed any construction money at this time. We need to continue to lobby our federal contingent for construction money, and this includes all adjacent counties, Dare County municipalities, and concerned citizens. We need to be certain that when this transportation bill passes, if it does, that we get, we don't get left out of the funding required to get this bridge replaced that everyone recognizes needs to be done. Like to say congratulations to our service pin recipients for their 50 years of service. As always, thank you, Darrell and Charlie, for your 50 years of service. And our Employee of the Month, Jeremy Essick. Thank you so much for your service to Dare County. That's all.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Vice Chairman, with respects to your comments concerning Alligator, would it be appropriate that we, at this time, we reiterate what you shared with us, just as a letter to our state and federal legislators to follow up with it?
I think that would be good. Bobby can add to anything that I overlooked in the comments that I made. Bobby, if I missed anything, please fill in the blanks. But certainly, you know, we did put this in front of Senator Burr, Senator Tillis, and at the time, Walter Jones' office, tell you how far back this goes, on one of our visits to DC. We included a packet subsequently that we sent that included the resolution that we did a few years ago. It may be time to revisit that. But certainly, we need to get in front of them and have some personal conversation with them about this. Bobby, I'm sorry.
So the net takeaway from that meeting was DOT was confident about all aspects of it. They had money for the design phase. They were confident that they could get it all done. Everything except the funding part of it was pretty much, they were sure that would be completed and done and in place so that we could work on the funding. They can't lobby, they can't tell us to lobby, but the takeaway was also, we need to get out there and get to work with our legislative delegations to get money allocated. We've already begun that process, as Vice Chairman Overman just described to you. Commissioner Ross and others, we were on a call with the Albumoral Commission and have them supporting this as well as part of their programs and the things that they're doing with Highway 17. Those were the two projects it got. And so we've started getting some traction on there. Commissioner Tobin and I were at a stormwater meeting, and that was the one project that came up in a meeting that was statewide. And so we've started that process, but I think we've got to now start working on our delegation. And my take, and Vice Chairman, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're talking about the delegation in Washington, DC. I don't think we're talking about the delegation in Raleigh. I think Representative Hannig is certainly well aware, Representative Steinberg is aware they're both on it, and to the extent that the state plays a role, they support the project as best we can tell. But the funding, I think, because of the size of the funding, would likely come on the federal side that that would, your take was.
Absolutely.
And so that's where we need to focus our efforts.
I know it's been a number of years since we went up there and had that meeting with those. I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be appropriate to just follow up with a letter to them?
Well, actually, on driving back from the meeting, we talked about, is it time, we haven't been up there in a while, is it time to go?
Right.
Time to go up there and have a face-to-face with some of the folks up there to get...
And Terrell is intimately involved in this as well. I mean, they are, they are, they are ready to go on it. I mean, we are the two counties that are most involved, although the adjacent counties are involved in it as well.
Well, maybe, maybe we look at first of the year, we make another trip.
Tommy Everett, the chairman of the Terrell Board of Commissioners, sat beside me and told me, anything that we were going to do to further this project, they were on board. Let them know how they could help. They would go do whatever, that it was as important or more important to them maybe than it was to us. And so they're in with both feet.
Well, let's, what do you think about first of the year, we make another trip up there?
You know me, I stay on good.
Sure. Okay. We'll do it.
Yeah. Just as a comment on context, I've been watching news reports of the, I'll call it the scaled-back 1.75 trillion infrastructure bill. If it were passed and devoted strictly to bridges, we could build 7,000 Alligator River Bridges.
Wow.
Yeah. So when they talk about it's only 1.75, that literally could build 7,000 of these bridges at about $250 million apiece.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only problem is, the infrastructure bill has very little infrastructure in it.
Well, that's the problem.
That's right. That's exactly right.
Because if it was devoted infrastructure, you'd have highways and bridges repaired all across the country, but that's not what it's about.
That's right. All right, good deal. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Yes, sir.
Is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bateman?
Saturday, a week ago, I attended a revealing of a plaque for James McCleese down in Bowser Town. Saturday morning was a good time. And family was there, and good way to honor a guy who just yelled named James, and he was always smiling, just a super-nice guy. And he had dedicated, basically speaking, his whole life, town of Manio, as an employee. So it was a good time down there. At the same time, that morning, I was invited over to go over to Head Start and do the after-school program by Betty Selby. And there's good things over there. I spent half an hour walking through, and there's computers all around the areas and so forth, and kids are just working hard and studying, and so it's a good thing that we're doing over there with his kids and all the volunteers. I want to thank them. This thing with the, and it takes me a while to kind of process stuff with this, with the nursing homes and stuff. So we're increasing our liability as members, such as yourself, to being sued, and then given more responsibility. And I see on here, there's no compensation involved in it either. It's all volunteer work. I guess that's truly our federal government and our state governments working very closely with each other to make sure that we take care of them.
The continuing education aspect of it, too. I mean, they're just loaded up.
Yeah, it's really a joke. And then, and the 1.5 trillion, you talk about a 1.7 trillion. If you look at it from my little pea brain, to try to understand what 1.7 trillion it is, is 1.7100 billion dollars. That's a lot of money.
Yes, it is.
1.7100 billion dollars.
That's why I tried to contextualize this with, oh, my God, it's a $212 million bridge, Wally?
Yep.
You built 7,000 of them.
Yeah.
I mean, think about how, this is scaled back by half. The numbers boggle the mind, guys.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Cal?
Yes, sir. I really don't have anything of consequence to report down the banks, other than the fact that the fishermen are here, and it has been the strongest fall to date of four-wheel drives on the highway down there. It's significant. It's a good thing. This board has acknowledged before that your surf fishing segment of our demographic, they are spenders. You just don't go buy a pickup truck and bait and beer and go out to eat and food line and stay in a nice place. I mean, they're significant. It's steady as she goes down there, and it's, we're busy. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Tobin?
Yeah, well, I'd like to thank the commissioners again for your interest in the CAC. It really is a big problem statewide. I don't know what the solution is, but we need to figure it out. We need to help those residents. In Veterans Day, November 11th, I learned something very interesting on the news yesterday morning. The Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. The Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, as you know, you cannot go up to the tomb itself. It's restricted. And there's a soldier there 24 hours a day, walking back and forth. Does anybody know how many steps they take?
21.
21 steps, correct. On November 9th and 10th of this year, for the first time since the early 1940s, the American public will be allowed to go to the tomb and lay flowers, and also walk those 21 steps. That's November 9th and 10th. They expect thousands and thousands and thousands of people to go do it. But... But that's all I've got. I just thought that was really interesting.
If you've never been there to see it, it's amazing. It's quite impressive.
Yes, yes, most definitely.
My 90-year-old father, who was my hero, landed in Normandy, came home from the war. His brother-in-law talked him into joining the Marine Corps. His unit was called up for the Korean conflict, and he went to the front lines of the Korean conflict. Had the pleasure of taking my dad to the World War II memorial after my service in the Army. And the two of us went up there and toured that, and then went to the Tomb of the Unknown. So, quite impressive.
Yeah.
Even the YouTube stuff that you can look up on YouTube, I mean, just watching it is almost like you're there.
Yeah.
It's powerful.
You're right, Danny. It's pretty impressive. Rain, snow, sleet, hail, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's pretty, pretty impressive. If that didn't choke at your heartstrings, nothing will. I'll tell you that.
That's right.
Thank you. I have one last item. I think each of you have before you a resolution opposing the United Nations Agenda 21. And even though this board did that some nine years ago, we're still in peril with United Nations and their nature of destructive and insidious nature. And I have this resolution before you that I encourage us to tweak it and redo the resolution from this board. If it's the, if you've had a chance to look at it, it's a pleasure of the board. I'd like to ask that the, we work on tweaking this and redoing this resolution, if it's a pleasure of the board.
Absolutely. So, move if you need a motion.
Okay. County manager, I think we need a motion to do that, rewrite this resolution in opposition to opposing United Nations Agenda 21.
Is the, you say tweak, is the content?
Yes.
Be the same, just update the dates?
Yes.
And the signatures?
That's right.
Reaffirmation, so to speak.
Reaffirmation.
Sure. You would need a motion.
Okay. All right, and that's, that motion, thank you, Vice Chairman Overman. Vice Chairman Overman made that motion, it's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? If you can, those in favor of the motion, then signify the same eye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried unanimous. County manager, is that something we can bring back on the 15th?
If we're doing what you just described in your motion, we can do it, and you can sign it without coming back. You just approve it.
Great, great. Is that the pleasure of the board?
Yes.
Absolutely, okay. Thank you. Very good. Then, that's, that's all I have. Well, I do have one more item, and I think the board's aware, and we provided you with a copy of it, is the letter I sent to Representative Deston Hall on behalf of the board concerning redistricting of Dare. You know, they want to split Dare, so.
That was a great letter.
Yep, thank you. So, just wanted you to be aware that that letter has been sent, and I appreciate your support on that. All right, county manager?
Yes, sir. Couple of things. Shanna was up here a little while ago, talking about how, what a difficult year, and how her folks have stepped up and done a great job. It seems like in public works, we take two steps forward and one step backwards. We were moving forward with a plan, as we had talked about before, for recycling, to reopen and all that, and another of our two recycle employees resigned to take another job, so we're down to one. With that said, we've come up with a plan that we're working to implement the details of that, putting the pieces in place as we go now, that we could open back up our recycling centers, at least at some limited scale throughout the county. We'll come back and do some public notices with the dates that that's going to happen, but we hope that it happens in the month of November. We won't have dumpsters for trash, we won't have anything but recycling, and we're trying to make sure that we've got something worked out with a recycling hauler as to how we segregate the recycling, and then how, what are we going to do in the longer term with trailers, and who's going to provide them, and those kind of things. But Shanna's working on all that now, and we hope to be able to come to you maybe sometime ahead, the next meeting maybe, maybe not, but hopefully this month, to be able to get those things reopened. When we do, we'll give the information to Dorothy and get it out there so the public will know. With the limited manpower, though, I'll tell you that if the people in the community abuse the system, if we're finding that people are throwing their mattresses and their car motors and boats and CND and debris and all that, at the bottom of the pile at our, recycling centers, we just don't have the manpower to clean up behind them, and we're likely going to have to close those, which is not what we'd like to do. We'd like to get the recycling centers back up and get them available to the people as conveniently as we can. So, just to make you aware, that, that should be coming, and it looks promising, and the discussions with the private hauler are going well, and so, hopefully, we'll have that worked out shortly to get those back open. As you know, we're, we're at a point where DFI is coming back to us here shortly with the plans that's going to happen this month, and the specifications and all that, and to give us some guidance with regard to our affordable housing programs. With that said, they have asked for, with the budget dollars, all the multiple phone calls, I know I've gotten, and I think the chairman and maybe some of you have gotten, with developers and people looking now to do affordable housing and wanting to know, what tax breaks we're going to give them, how much money we're going to give them, all those kind of things. If, if funding comes through in the budget to do these kinds of things, then we're going to have some decisions to make. DFI has asked to us to understand and agree that what they've agreed to do, and what we've paid them for, gets us through this solicitation process that we've done now. But come, you know, January or June, and we get an influx of money, and we want them to go through and evaluate any of those projects, or do another solicitation, all that, we're starting again. They want to be clear. I think we're clear on that, but they want to be clear and ask me to sign something saying that. And so, I told them I would run it by you all, make sure you were clear. I think that was our understanding with them in the beginning. And so, my intention is to sign it, unless you all say different.
Trying to think of the downside.
Is it time-sensitive that we sign this?
Yeah, they need to get, what they're concerned about is what they call mission creep, and what has, what's happening to us is, our mission is creeping because we started out knowing we had two or three things, and we may wind up having dozens. I mean, who knows what, where this is going to lead? And they just didn't want to have any false expectations on our part, or misunderstandings about
Right.
what we thought their role was going forward.
Yeah, I've not been overwhelmed with their sense of urgency.
Exactly.
And I've shared that publicly. So, I'm hesitant. Again, I'm not trying to be critical of them, I just, I mean, I just haven't found any yet. We're on your side here, guys. We're on the scene, we're here in your county, we're doing all this. It's more of, yeah, well.
Send us money.
Yeah. Again, the money isn't huge, but I just, I just haven't felt like they've moved the ball. Now, again, you're closer to it, Bobby, I could be wrong here. And if I am, I'll stand corrected.
I'll, there are three things that have created the slowness, if you will, of what the work that they have done. One was COVID. Two was us. We vacillated back and forth, we had fits and starts, we said do this, do that, and then we said, no, do this, do that, now let's bring in this. And we really got to a point where we didn't do where we started.
A little bit of it was, we don't know what we don't know.
Well, that's right.
And we're trying to embark on something.
And then, you know, and then, so some of it was, was that, and then, you know, of course, some of it was them as well. So, we are where we are, they have, they are now at a point where they're going to give us the deliverables that we've paid for, that's coming up, and we'll be in a position to make some decisions on the projects that we have on the board. And, and then, as, if we go forward, and we're going to do new projects after we decide on these, and we intend to use them again, then we would do a new contract with them because they will have fulfilled their obligations when they do these presentables, make the presentations and the solicitations to the developers for the things that we have on the table now. And if we add things to the plate in the future, then we have to talk to them again if we want them to help us with that stuff. That's what, that's what this agreement says.
Let me throw this out. And I, along with Commissioner Ross, I've been pretty vocal about this publicly as well and privately, that I don't, I wasn't happy with the sense of urgency that we've received from them. I'm not so sure we need them in the future. If we get this funding that's in the budget, and we've got other projects on the table, we're going to have to do a request for proposal to, to get, if there's other opportunities out there. So, I, I don't see, I don't see where they can help us with respects to future projects. And, and I know they're critical with the 4 and 9%, but with this huge amount of money, if it comes across the table, I, I really, maybe I'm missing something here, but I, I don't, I don't see, I don't see where we need their services any longer.
Two things. I'm not asking to reengage them, I'm asking, what we're doing is just clarifying that when we're done with these projects, their contract ends. And if we're going to do new projects, and we want them, then we hire them.
Yeah, I was just going to ask you specifically, what are you asking us to agree with you on?
That's right. And so, what I'm asking is approval to sign something and say, yeah, we understand that when you finish this, you're finished.
Then, okay.
That's like a MOU kind of thing.
I think that's good.
I'm okay with that.
I think that's good, and there's no need to burn the bridge.
Right.
Well, that's true. They could come in.
One, one thing I'll say, and I'm not being argumentative with the chairman, whether we use them or not, we'll have to decide once we know where we are. But we're going to need somebody to, to help us.
That's what the developers should be doing.
Yeah, developers have all that. Well, you're talking about tax credits and stuff.
Who's going to look over the developer's shoulder to be sure the developer
So, then you got Fox.
is doing things that are right in the market and all those kind of things. The point is, there are groups out here, DFI is one of them, there's Parker Poe, our bond counsel, has a lawyer that does this kind of stuff in Charlotte. There are multiple places you can go to get help in these areas where you do something that we don't normally do. And this is one of the things we don't do routinely. And so, when we get there and know what we've got, we probably should sit down and decide what we think we can do internally.
That's fine.
And what we don't. And if we find things that we can't, then we need to engage somebody to help us do those things. But I don't think it's as easy as having Dustin do an RFP and put it out in the world, and all of a sudden, we're going to get all these great proposals. I don't think it's going to, it works that way. There's a market you have to get to, to do this. So, anyway, we can talk about that when that time comes, but for today, I just need you, somebody to make a motion to approve.
Clarify this, with this letter, does that mean that we are locked in to them for this entire project?
No, what that says is, when they finish what they're doing for us right now with the projects we have on the table, the two projects.
Then they're done.
Then, then our contract ends.
I think both parties are protected.
And both parties. They wanted to be sure that we weren't expecting them to come in and evaluate all the projects that would be associated with whatever money we get out of legislature in the future. And, no, and so, we aren't, we aren't ready to do that yet, we don't know what we've got. So, this is something that I normally would have signed just without asking, but it, it just clarifies that we're completing the contract.
Well, I think we have other options before us down the road, that we have other, other, other folks that we could, we could potentially go to for help, and we need to, we need to pursue that, and then make a decision
Right.
as to who we feel like can best serve our needs.
Right.
It's as the vice chairman says, we're not burning any bridges. They're, they're in the game. Everything's on the table.
Right.
Move to approve. Second?
All right, there's a motion on the table then, by the vice chairman to approve, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries you now.
Mr. Chairman, so, all I want is for somebody to tell me what our options are, and then, so I can make a decision, and so we can make a decision to move forward.
Well, it's what all of us want.
That's what's going to happen this week.
I understand that.
It's what all of us want.
It's like, you know, I share with Chairman Ross and your frustration. And I know these folks are doing the best they possibly can. I feel like I'm in the damn Seinfeld show about nothing.
That's right.
We've been sitting here
Right.
talking, and my phone's ringing, your phone's ringing, what are you doing about affordable housing? We're doing nothing about affordable housing right now.
After, after our initial meetings with them, they promised that they'd come back to us in September, we hadn't seen anything. Then they promised October, we hadn't seen anything.
Go ahead, Wally.
And the latest is November, and I'm going to disagree with the county manager, he's going to tell me I'm wrong, and I'm not wrong on that. That's what we've been told, and that's what we've heard, and we don't have anything yet. And here it is, November, and we still don't have anything.
And we asked for this in February.
That's right.
At the workshop.
Thank you.
Wally? Go ahead.
Speechless.
The only thing I would disagree.
Somebody thinks we ain't doing anything on housing.
Absolutely.
We have not been sitting on our hands with housing. I promise you that. I mean, I spend.
Not at all. I don't care about perception.
I do.
I'm telling you what's actual.
That, I mean, that's certainly not to question this, and, and we hear that, we're not doing anything, and we're doing all kinds of stuff left and right with respects to essential affordable housing, workforce housing, but, but it's time, it's time we get something in front of us to make a decision.
I think we're there.
Pardon?
I say, I think we're there, that should happen.
Sign the budget, things will happen.
Yeah.
The only hangup right now is Governor Cooper refusing to sign the budget.
Yeah.
There's 37 million in there waiting for us, 35 million.
Let's, let's hope he signs it. Let's hope he signs it.
I have reservations at that will.
He's still fighting for Medicaid.
I don't know that that's going to happen.
Chairman, did you all vote?
Yeah, it was unanimous.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, county manager. Public Information Officer Ms. Hester, do you have anything for us today?
Just quickly, I know you all know that the boat ramp in Rodanthie, with the Wildlife Resource Commission opened, and you're talking about the housing and that, and what's going on with that. There's a lot going on. I just wanted to remind you all, next month, I've, I'm working with Health and Human Services to establish a date for the ribbon cutting for that new facility, so we'll be working on that to get that, and do a tour and have a ribbon cutting. And you've got a lot on the plate, on, I mean, finishing up in the next quarter, first quarter of next year, COA. We're just doing some planning in our department, and as we're looking at the things that are going to come along, of course, the Rodanthie Bridge, COA, I'm going to miss something because I didn't make.
Well, when the budget comes through, I mean, it's going to be.
What's that?
If the, when, when, when this budget gets signed, we're going to ramp up. There's some stuff in there for us.
Absolutely.
There's about 40 million in Representative Hannig's district alone.
Yeah, so, it's going to be a busy first part of the year, just with projects that are being completed, so it's exciting, very, very exciting. And even looking back over the past year, when we get to this time of the year, we start looking at the past year of things that have happened, and you look at the animal shelter and just a number of things, and it really is exciting. So, there is a lot of progress. The dredge, we're going to have, what's, April?
April.
Yeah.
They'll say in April.
There's, there's.
It won't be here in April, but.
Yeah.
I was just clearing my throat.
Takes two weeks to get it here.
Just clearing my throat.
This is just a quick reminder of, of all that there is, and we do have a page, darenc.com/projects, where we've outlined everything that, that's out there and that's upcoming. And I think David may correct me, I think November 17th is our date for opening bids for the Avon-Buxton nourishment. So we should hear something later this month about that project as well, because the other nourishment projects are on board for next year. So hopefully Buxton and Avon as well. But that's it. I just have been thinking about all of it. It's like, wow, y'all have really accomplished a lot and it's very exciting.
Yeah. Thanks, Doris. Thank you, Doris. Dave, you have anything else for us this morning?
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, those other projects aren't quite on board yet, so, you know, it's the December LGC meeting and last week, debt management informed us that our audit due date was not November 30th, it's November 19th. But then on Friday, I talked to Susan McCullen, who's head of fiscal management, and I just say I wish everybody there was the same as Susan, because we've got a very reasonable solution worked out, but if you try to get Sally and I, we're doing nothing but working on that audit report. But, but we'll get there for that one. We did have the pre-bid conference last week for Buxton and Avon, and we did have three bidders attend, so.
I remember you saying.